We have to open the meeting and do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you roll call Dan Dan Buran?
Yeah.
Ben Hubb?
Yeah.
Jeff Porckenny?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have any guest speakers, do we? Any correspondence?
I have some. I actually, I just, I don't know who laid this here.
Oh, uh, you hold me up, just do you.
Okay. I understand Jeff has been taking orders for the community building and thought that Don Watkins was supposed to be taking orders and working with the building. What's going on should the locks be changed? And was the park committee notified that it was dissolved?
Who's that from?
It's not signed, I guess Barb, I don't know. And Don Watkins left me out here also. That the only time the building was rented, I guess this is under community, or park committee, it was laying here, communications, I guess, by the way. The only time the building was rented was for an auction on the 8th, and Jeff and Barb opened it and took charge, so no, so one of them should have the building fee. I've had several people booked it, but I do not have the other key or the calendar, so I hope it is not double booked. That's from Don. I also have some other information I received. The Lakin County Planning and Development Department is beginning the process of developing the Lakin County's application for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant for small city projects. There's going to be a public hearing on Thursday, February 27th, that's this Thursday, at 4:00 PM, in the meeting room, on the fourth floor. I won't be able to attend that, I don't know if you really want to go to that. Did you all receive this, or was it just sent to me?
I didn't read it.
I don't know if anybody wants to read over this information and see if you want to go to the meeting. I also received a letter from the Lakin County Planning Commission about the new welcome signs that are supposed to go at the edge of the county. Most, they will look like this unless we, we can change that design there in the middle if we want to. But we need to come up with something and let her know what we want to do, if we want to change it. She said we can change it to something that means something to our area. And she just sent me another email today, asking what we would like to do. Do we want to just leave at the courthouse, or do we want to? This one, there's, it would be Gray Shaw, Brownsville, 40 and 668.
It's out there by Landville, might be the one, so.
Yeah, they got one out there.
Well, it says 40 and 668.
Yeah, they got one down there too, down at 40.
Is that what God counted?
Uh, they got one coming in from Miss Kingdom in Lakin.
That's how it called Lakin, huh?
I know, but they got a new sign down.
Yeah, right, yeah, there is one up there. See a reason to change it, though?
No, I don't either.
What's the person's?
What?
What's the person's name that sent the letter?
Um, Angela Warner.
What about signing?
Gerald Newman.
That's what these are.
Because we have sections, you don't know your Lakin county.
I think they're just doing the main, the main roads.
Okay, when are we gonna roll off through that? Because during public, we're missing signs, so.
Most of them, I mean, Mount Hope's got one, don't it?
Small, small, they're small ones, or?
And I, Midland Road got one.
Mount's red, does it?
I know, but they're all those.
You don't even know Snatch Red?
Yeah, I know, yeah, none there, Mag. And I think they're going to Somerset. I think that's about it.
I also have a mileage certificate. They have us down as 23.74. Last year it was 23.77, and the reason for the change is, um... They added the extension for Smeddon Road, which is .010, and they vacated Maple Street, which was .040, which made a change of .030. So, I just need...
What were the totals again?
It was 23.77, went to 23.74. I just need a trustee to sign. Actually, I need all of you to sign it.
I'm going to accept the mileage certificate as presented.
I'll second.
Does that have something in this, all those two of them, those? Oh, yeah, because we're supposed to keep talking. Do you roll call on the motion? Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Just copy the same thing?
Yes. We're keeping a copy and we're sending a copy in.
Which street are they closing?
Maple.
That's just one road over here.
Mount, Cowal.
Oh, okay. All right, you thinking about getting ready to do something, or?
I have no idea. Mission must pass that.
Uh?
Have they had a meeting?
Yeah.
So, you have any correspondence?
That's all I have.
You have anything there?
No. Anything in correspondence?
Yeah, good. You all good? Sure. Uh, glad, I brought my check back again, Dan. You didn't sign it last month. I'd appreciate it if you would, or give a reasonable explanation of why. I have $125 here collected from Howard's Auction Service. I also took, I made sure you filled out all the forms, front and back, all the rules were followed. Had a receipt booked at home, so I wrote him a check, or a receipt out for the $150 he paid. Building was cleaner when he left than when he came. Gave him a receipt to give him back his $25 deposits, so there's that. I think that's it on the correspondence. Are you going to sign this, Dan, or are you going to give me an explanation why not?
I've been awful busy.
Didn't I three signatures already on?
I had a couple things on the correspondence.
Just to set the record straight, and you're refusing, again, this isn't the first time, you're refusing again for, to sign my payroll check from last month, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it is correct, Jeff.
And what's the reason, Dan? I, I'm looking for an explanation, you know?
Give me an explanation why you don't sign the employees' checks.
I've always given an explanation, anytime that I've been questioned on any check that I haven't signed.
Uh, you're not worth our maneuver. Let's move on.
Couple things I had on the correspondence. One thing was from the Friends of Bowling Green Township, and I'll just read it, there's a couple things on here that they're asking for. From the Friends of Bowling Green Township, they'd like to request permission to host the 2014 Easter Egg Hunt. They'd like to hold it on April 19th at 11:30 AM, or a rain date, if it rains that day, would be April 26th at the same time. If we allow them to host it, they would like to ask for $200 for, it says retreats, prizes, gifts, stuff for the children. That'll also have to be for eggs, I don't think we have any plastic eggs or anything I got left over, so it'll be for the, I know for eggs, prizes, whatever, whatnot, everything it's going to take.
I have some eggs I'll donate. Would like to get rid of.
A lot?
I, a bag full, I probably have 50 or 60. My kids are too old to hunt eggs anymore.
You want to talk about that one? I, I don't have a problem with it, they'd like to host it, I mean, I think it's, it's a good thing for, I don't care, for the community, so.
Well, in the past, we did have motions on different years to give them $100, $150, all that time, every time that money was actually returned to the funds and then some. So my concern is, are there events planned that are going to return our monies?
What do you mean by events planned that's going to return?
Well, in the past, the people that did it, they had auctions, they had raffles and all kinds of various things they did, that recouped money back, and plus I've been involved, including myself, always donated quite a bit, bake sales and things like that, we always made more than what we, the...
Yeah, I can't answer for them, I can't answer.
But they were a national committee, though, this time it's an independent group, it's true, there's a difference.
Yeah, I can't answer for them, but I'm sure that's probably a possibility, that if there's anything collected or raised, that they're going to turn it back into the township.
Is anyone?
Does anybody want to speak on that? From the committee? Nobody?
What? It's quick, huh?
Usually in the past, we give them $150, that's what's been before.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
Yeah. I, I know that there's no eggs in the closet over there, I looked over there, to see what was in there, there's no egg stuff, so that's probably, I don't know, $30, $40 for eggs to buy 40. I say we don't do it, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have any problem.
Because of the time, and the date, what day is Easter on?
It starts the 20th, I don't know, isn't it?
Um, yeah, it is.
I don't have a calendar that says.
It's Easter.
Why, Ian?
I don't have a problem with them doing it, I do have a problem with not having an answer on the financial part, that what we're doing is...
You got receipts, Jeff, you got that money back?
Excuse me. Like I said, it is different this time, because it was actually township government that did it last time, committee was a subgroup of our township, this time it's an independent group.
Sure.
So there is a difference.
Sure.
And like I said, I can't speak for them, I don't sit on that, on the, you know, the Friends of Bowling Green Township, but I'm sure if there's any money raised, donated, whatnot, that it'll be turned back over to the township.
Has he got receipts, children, and what he's saying is the truth?
I've never seen it.
Have you, Jeff?
Receipts of what?
Where you got this money back?
Yeah, it's all in the records, Jenny has that. She has the money that was in the park committee funds, the money that went out of the park committee funds, she wrote a check for it.
We're squabbling over something we're going to do, it's going to be positive for the community, it's for the kids of the community, you know, I think we're...
I just...
I don't know who's squabbling, I'm not squabbling.
I'd like to make a motion that, that we allow the Friends of Bowling Green Township to host the 2014 Easter Egg Hunt on April 19th at 11:30, for a rain date of April 26th.
He can't, are you worried about the money all covered, Jeff?
Are you going to include any of the money?
I'd also like to add in there that we go ahead and allow up to $200 for retreats, prizes, gifts, eggs, whatnot. If need be, I'll take the money, and I'll purchase the stuff, if they give me a list, I'll purchase it. If you have a problem with them putting the money in their hands.
Okay, so the motion was made to allow the Friends of Bowling Green Township to host the egg hunt on April 19th, with a rain date of April 26th, and also to allow them to per, to use $200 for eggs and candy. Is there a second to the motion?
No, second. If you need any more, I'll donate $20 to...
We'll cover, Danny, we'll cover, that's all you're worried about.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
One other thing that was on here says, also on March 22nd or 29th, I assume it's 2014, a free chili cook-off for the community, no charge to enter, and free to sample the chili, prize to the first place winner that is determined by the people who taste the chili. And I guess that, you know, they're asking for the building for that, it's, it's another community event, I don't have a problem with it, if they want to, or something like that. You guys have any?
Don's on there. Auctioneer I know called and, I related it to Don and gave him a date, I don't remember what the date was, so we have to make sure that somebody doesn't already have these reservations for these days.
Sure, there's two dates on here, so.
And it might be April, I don't remember, it was March or April.
And, and I don't know. I mean, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and allow them to have a chili cook-off for the community, it's going to be, like I said, no charge, ten or, prize to the first place winner, on either March 22nd or 29th, we'll check with Don to see if the building's been rented, do you know the dates?
Is there a second?
No, second.
Are there any funds asked for on this event?
There is no, well, it's on here.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes. I received a call this morning from a detective from Lakin County Sheriff's Office, his name is Mike Kreider. He wanted to, I guess, kind of extend an offer to the township, any residents in the township, to see if they had any questions for the sheriff's office, they're willing to come out and speak to us, you know, if anybody has any questions, if they, if anybody wants to see any statistics, they can get all that for us. If they'd like, like I said, just to come out and speak on anything, you know, they're willing to do that, to come out and talk, he said, you know, some of the things that people ask for, maybe like numbers of burglaries in the township, any kind of drug cases, any kind of sex offender information, he said any statistics anybody wants, you know, they're willing to come out and talk to us. He also, I told him that there was maybe a little interest in doing a community watch program, he said that they have somebody in their office that kind of works with communities on that, too, so if, if we showed interest in any of that, that they can bring somebody out to, to talk to people about that. Any services that they provide, or if anybody has any questions for them, that, that, you know, they're more, more than willing to come out and speak to us, so if anybody has any question, definitely let us know, and we'll relate.
Is that something, you need to contact them, or can you, you want to ask them or anything?
I can give you his contact information, he didn't say not to give it out, he said that he would like to attend a couple of our meetings, a year at least, just to, you know.
I'll get that after the meeting, thank you.
Sure, definitely. That's all I had on the correspondence. So if anybody has any questions or anything, let me know, and I can call him, email him, and give you their contact information.
I do, I got a question.
Okay.
When you call him, why didn't you ask him, once again, how a trustee could put about 10, what was it, 10 or 18 people, driving license, which is social security number on the internet, and get by with it? And trustee is Jeff Porckenny.
Be a good question for him.
Because I called everybody so far, nobody, the possibility was great of Jeff's some reasons, or they don't want to do that, I'm sick of it. I don't like my ID, my social security, I'm a rep on that, because we press charges against them, and he needed charges to get some, that's outside. So for me, press a charge against someone, I got to pay for it with my driving license on the internet. I bet you he likes his wife's driving license everywhere, would he? For his kids? That's all I got to say. I'm a bit illegal, I'm nervous. I say he's cheating.
You, you got any correspondence, Jeff, or?
Already did it, Dan.
Alrighty. Same too, we've got the lights fixed on the truck?
Yeah, pretty good. Did you get a bill from Taylor?
No.
How much was it a bill for a sender?
$500.
And that's for two loads?
That was one load.
One load. There'll be another one, so I'll take another one, so, it'll take another month to get it there, so.
Okay, ability. I see. Zoning?
Yeah, I have a question, a resident called me, they want to put two roofs on the house, they also want a pole barn, so my question is, do I charge them for two permits, or is it one permit? Because it's all on the same property.
They want to do, basically.
They want to put a cover over their deck?
Okay.
And they want to put a cover over another, like a lean-to, attached to their garage, to put their camper under, and they want to build a pole barn for their lawn mowers and four-wheelers and things of this nature, so the question is, I mean, I know the one, the two, the lean-to and the deck would be considered one, because they're adding on to one structure, but they also want a pole barn, so would I charge them for two or one?
Here's a question to that, the deck's already there.
Yes.
So they're not adding any more square footage?
Correct, except for on the other side, where the barn is, I mean, the garage is, they want to add a lean-to.
So the one that they want to put up, a real probably deck, they're not adding any square footage to the house?
No, no, it's just straight up.
So is there a permit required for that?
No, for that, no.
So they're asking for a permit for the lean-to?
The lean-to and the pole barn.
Got it.
So would it be one permit or two? Because I guess it'd be classified if they don't...
The pole barn, is it agricultural?
No, because it's just for their lawn mowers, and their kids' toys, and four-wheelers, things of that nature. But I mean, I guess if they did not connect the lean-to to the house, it would be considered a movable structure, so that they wouldn't really even need a permit.
Yeah. I, I don't know that.
I don't know.
I don't know.
But it's on you guys, one or two?
I'd just say, they're going to do it all this summer?
Yes.
Just do one if they're, if they're going to do it at the same time, yeah?
Do the 100 for rebuild, or add-on, or do a 150 for new construction?
I just, uh, because they're doing a...
Because they're doing a pole barn.
I'd say just do the new construction for the pole barn, and let that cover the other one, too. What?
Yeah, obviously.
What do you think, Jeff?
I don't think we have any permits we've taken on pole barns, do we?
So proper?
Do we have any past pole barns that paid, uh?
Yes.
If they're not agricultural?
If they're not agricultural, they pay for it. We don't just let everybody put pole barns up.
Where's Polled Road at, though?
Laurel Hill.
Say follow the zoning the way it's written.
So you don't have an opinion on charging 100, or 150, or two permits, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying follow the zoning.
I am following the zoning and I'm asking advice from the trustees, because that's your job to assist me when I ask for it.
Well, if they are specifically saying the pole barn is not for agriculture, then I suppose you should be paying, charging them. If the intention of it is not for agriculture, then it should be treated as such.
That's what we're assigning.
Sorry, you're not understanding the question, they have two things they'd like to do.
I, I do understand it.
Should we charge them for two permits, or do a new build, which would cover both?
It's two different structures, isn't it?
But it's on one property.
I, I don't have a problem, they're doing it at the same time.
Well, Dan, didn't, wasn't there a point when you did that, didn't you take two out on your same property at the same time?
I was going to build another building, but I didn't, didn't build it.
But you took two out, which is separate buildings, so.
Took one out.
Yeah.
You only took the one out, you never took the second one out, because you didn't do it, you were ready.
I didn't do it.
Well, I thought you paid for two at the time. At the time, would it be like 15, you paid 100?
I don't remember.
But it should be treated the same ways in the past, it can't be one one way and another the other way.
Well, I've never had this issue in the past.
It'd be the same scenario.
I never built two.
But you would have paid the permit, whether you did it or not.
Well, when Dan came to me also on the second bill, that was beyond his two years, see, only the permits are good for two years, you say.
So are you saying you applied one to the next?
He applied for one, and then he came back and asked for a renewal, but he didn't need it, because he was finished. Because his two years was up. He's never asked for two permits on the same structure at the same time, nobody has. This is my first time, that's why I brought it up.
These are two separate structures you're talking about now, right?
He wants to put a lean-to on the garage, and he wants to build a pole barn.
Two separate structures, lean-to's not part of the garage or connected to the pole barn, right?
He wants to add the lean-to to the garage, and build a pole barn.
The pole barn won't be connected to either of those other structures, correct?
I couldn't tell you if he wants to connect, or he, I'm telling you what he asked me. I just wanted your opinion, but I got two of the, my advisors.
If it's two separate buildings, it should be two separate permits. That's how you did it with Dan, that's how you should do it.
I did not do it with Dan that way, please don't make statements that are false.
If he's doing it at the same time, my opinion is charging one, charging the new bill.
That's called a sentence. They're going to stand it, or?
I'll second.
I didn't make a motion.
I have nothing on this.
They don't exist anymore.
No, that's right. Okay, unfinished business.
No, probably.
I took them off the list.
I might have some time, but go ahead, what did I, it's good.
Whatever, but you know, they don't really exist anymore, I'm taking them off.
Well, are we going to be getting a report like we did from Don every month, then?
I just gave you the report.
I know, is that going to be the norm, then?
Well, if, if he actually gets to take over, because it sounds like you and Barb opened it up.
No, Barb wasn't there, I did.
Okay, so how, why?
I got, the man called me, apparently you never talked to Barb, and apparently they haven't been notified, I don't think Barb wrote that, no, there's no name on it, but where is that? I don't think that was hers.
It's not in there, it's in my phone.
I don't think she wrote that.
Okay, did you know the park committee was dissolved?
Yes.
So...
I was at the meeting.
And you didn't tell Barb?
Were you at that meeting? I don't recall, were you there?
Yes, I was there, I haven't missed a meeting recently.
Weren't you going to contact the members of the park committee, wasn't that something?
Yes, I was, but also...
She didn't ask you that, she asked me to talk to her.
Don't you know that the park committee was dissolved?
Yeah, that's never been a question, obviously.
And you didn't tell Barb, because I know, I'm sure you've talked to her.
When the auctioneer needed a key, I went to Barb and I got the key.
And did you tell her at that time?
And I gave it to the auctioneer, and I let him in.
Did you tell her at that time that the park committee was dissolved?
You don't have your own set of keys in that building?
I do have my own set of keys in that building.
So, so you have the keys from bottom?
I do, yes.
You do, and they're here tonight?
They're on my keychain, I'm...
So you have two sets of keys?
I do, and I'm keeping them both, too. If somebody needs in that building...
I'd like to see the extra set, here.
You can make another copy if you need it. I'm going to have two copies, because if I need to use mine to let somebody in, in there, I'm still going to have one, because it's always been...
You don't leave the key with that person.
Yes, you do, it's always been done that way, you do.
Why would it be there if Don is in charge of it?
People, all the while, have wanted in, a day before, to set up for an event and that type of thing, we've always done it, they've always been given the key, whether it was Don giving the key, or Barb, when it was the park committee giving the key.
Barb ain't going to do it no more.
I didn't say she did.
So you have the keys, do you have the calendar? That Barb was using, that's public records for the township.
I have a box in my car, when I picked up the key and found out that nobody had contacted her, I said, Barb, what do you have with everything in a box? I want it, so you don't have the responsibility of that anymore.
Can I see all that?
It's in my other, what I do have is a box.
Can I see all that information?
Yeah, I plan to bring it all down here, but the actual minutes, before I bring it down, I personally want to get a copy of all the meeting minutes before I do, and then I'll bring it down here, have what, whatever you want.
Make sure all that information gets put on the table, because I want to see it.
That's not a problem at all, but I'd like to...
And I'd like to see the extra set of keys, which would be...
So my key written, Barb? So my key written, Barb's a key.
I'd like for them hung in the loft box out there that you put on the wall. That's what the extra keys need to go.
There should be one there already.
That's what the extra keys need to go.
There should be one there already. At that time, there was an extra key to each building. There was, there was a backup key to everything in that box. Where it was left unlocked, I don't know what's-
Do you have the calendar that she was using previously? Is that in that box?
Yes, probably in the box.
So it is.
Yeah, I haven't gone through the box.
Very good. Well, I'd like to see that too. So she turned over everything, did you?
She sure did. I insisted on it. I don't want her having that burden.
Well, just, just to clear up the waters here, so everybody knows, everybody on camera, everybody in here, as of January 1st, 2014, we appointed Don Watkins in charge of the community building.
Yes.
So anybody that has any questions about rentals or anything like that, please call Don. His phone number is 787-2778. He'll be glad to help you. So nobody needs to call any previous park committee members. If they want to call us and have questions, that's fine. But we need to relay all the rentals so we don't cross paths here. We're not going to double work anything.
That's exactly what I did. Auctioneer said he wanted, I could tell you, I don't even remember the date. Actually, it was Sandy I talked with. It wasn't Don.
We live in December 6th of February, which was after the 1st of 2014. So all that information should have got relayed to Don.
Why didn't you tell the auctioneer to call Don? Because he's in charge of it now.
Somebody calls me and needs assistance, I'm going to help them.
Must change all the-
I did exactly, Mr. President Van Buren, you told me, Mr. Van Buren, you said you wanted to do it the way as in the past. You said someone would call. If they called you, you said you just called Don and let him know. That's exactly what I did when the auctioneer said he wanted this, this additional one. So I'm doing it, I'm doing it the way that you instructed to do it. If somebody needs in there, I'm going to let them in there.
I think he meant in the past before the park committee was formed.
I don't have a problem with one of us going down there and letting it in. If Don, if Don has something to do, that's great. Let's go down there and let him in. But as far as rentals or anything, we don't need to book anything. Don is going to take care of that. We don't need to say, yeah, you can have to this date. Well, lo and behold, it's already been booked.
I don't tell anyone they can have it until I know if it's open or not.
You don't tell them, period.
You didn't talk to any of them.
Nobody's going to call Don.
Who's?
Wait a minute. These pitts, so anxious, talking. Why? And why don't he bring them down here so everybody can look at this before he copies them?
Change-
He can change anything he wants. And you guys need to get him know, call the sheriff or something, say you want those minutes. If not, don't come to here. He don't have no business changing such and such minutes without you other two trustees.
I'm bonded just the same as any other elected official at this table. So you can, you can make up your conspiracy theories all you want, Ron.
No worries, Ron. All that stuff will be down here within the next seven days. All the information, the park committee and the keys, I'll be right here.
Well, he's got a reason for the, he wants to talk with us.
Did you have anything under unfinished business?
This doesn't make sense, Ron. It wouldn't make any sense at all. Couple other things.
Couple other things I had under unfinished business. The water softener got put in the community building, so we can check out off the list.
Dan, who did that? Who shared that with us?
Um, myself, Jack and Donnie.
Spending afternoon. Did you test the hardness of it when you did do it?
Test the hardness?
Yeah. To determine which softener to purchase?
Sure.
Are your concerns done now, Dan, with bacteria and the shocking? You know, you don't have concerns?
It's done.
Yeah, it's done. It's in. It's going to take a little bit of time. We don't use the water that much in here or over there. So hopefully, give it a little bit of time. It should clear that stuff up.
Yeah, it looks a lot better. It smells a lot better over here. Remember that night?
Couple other things. The new lights up here, we had a resident ask about this a couple times. Up here, that gravel lot, and then also the one by the church building have been replaced. AEP took care of that. As far as I know, we didn't get a bill for it. There should be AEP-owned lights. So those new lights are in. Another thing that was brought up last meeting was about an aerobics class being held in the community building over there. Having a resident from the community host that, put that on. I spoke with the prosecutor. She kind of, she referred me to our insurance company, so I called our insurance company, gave a rundown of the scenario of what wanted to happen there. They came back and they said they, they weren't real happy with it if that person wasn't licensed and they were not carrying their own liability insurance, that they weren't, they weren't real happy with it. So they suggested that, that we don't do that unless that person is willing to carry their own liability insurance and have form that people want to sign off in case something were to happen.
Did they put their opinion in writing?
They did not. I talked to the gentleman on the phone. If you'd like to call, talk to him. I'll pick you up. Another thing, there's unfinished business.
Just listen to that.
I don't think so. I'll talk to him.
Do you know if she has that or if she has, what her credentials are or anything?
I do not, but she said that she wasn't licensed or trained or anything like that, so. But I'll speak with that resident and kind of tell them what we found out. So at this point, I would just kind of take no action on that. Another thing was the trash. It's still on the agenda here. I talked to the prosecutor on, I believe it was the 13th. They had, CMI had till the 12th to respond. As of the 13th, there was no response that was turned in. Prosecutor, assistant prosecutor advised me that they were going to enter a default judgment against CMI. That's the last I've heard. She said she would keep me updated when she hears something. So leave it on. That's all I have.
I looked at that online today and there was no update. I think there's been an update in at least a couple of weeks online with the court view.
Okay, new business?
Weather breaks here, I know. Hopefully, next month, if we can get some days that are up in the 50s and sunshine, and we're going to be out filming foggles. So I know there's times I'm out there. We've got to get some nice halfway warm, sunshiny days for that stuff to, to really work. So just work with us, be patient, or we'll get out there, see if the weather breaks.
Speaking of weather breaking, can you guys put flower pots back together outside?
Yes, yes. They got kind of hard to see.
Yeah, that's what I think.
So yeah, we'll get that all cleaned up. So maybe we'll do a cleanup day after the park or something. So definitely.
Okay, public comment?
We have a ton of people here.
I got a couple. First thing, I want to thank the trustee, Don Danny. I want to thank the workers, the road to, to this quarter. I've been to a couple places even in trail. Their roads wasn't in the past. They did that, they was out here. So I really appreciate the guy and what you did, everything else. Jangle, shame, we could have given you a gift certificate or something for a bit, but out of my heart, I thank you very much. Without luck with the road, you know, it hurt. The second thing is, my truck, he got a citation because that bridge. Well, I think it's kind of unfair to figure out because the way I look at it, somebody, somebody had to call that one in. And, you know, if the city of Norfolk or Lickie County, you can't fix any bridge for about six months or even a long, or who knows when, because they always keep saying they don't have the money. This guy's got a backup from Phil Kings, Kurt to Jonathan or Capes.
Jonathan.
Yeah. I mean, uh-
I, I spoke with-
You guys need to get on their ass.
Right. I spoke with the engineer on that. I think I talked about last month a little bit. They told me the one on Somerset, they're going to try to have replaced next month, in March. The one over here on Cherry Hill will be June or July. He said probably towards July, they'll have it fixed, replaced, whatever they're going to do to it. I kind of brought that up about that trash truck. He said that he had heard about it. He kind of expressed that he was unhappy about it.
Yeah, I am too, because is it Mr. Corpenny who took them in?
And he said that the engineer's office, when they put a weight limit on bridges or closed a road or whatever, they actually employ one of the deputy sheriffs to, they assign them to areas like that. And they had taken a report that he was, the guy was crossing over that, so they had a truck out there and caught the guy doing it.
Well, they never done nothing to the bus driver.
Bus driver doesn't go over that.
Not now, not now.
She did, she has not gone over that road since face that.
I know she did go over it. When she went over that bridge once or twice, I do know that.
No, she has never.
Oh, Barb, you can say what you want.
No, no, I can say it for fact. No. She turns around in Phil Kings driveway.
I know that now.
She has not crossed that. When they said no, she has not crossed it.
She hadn't crossed it since-
When those signs came up, she has not crossed it.
Yeah, they haven't crossed it since they put the signs up.
Right, she has not crossed it. I mean, that was a fact.
I'm just stuck talking to John, what I'm trying to say.
Right. Well, yeah, well, that's what I found out. Back to the first thing, you know, I, I, we appreciate it, you know, the, you know, the positive comment about the snow removal. I know sometimes we, we get behind. We, we try to do what we can. I'll tell you what, it makes, makes me feel good, and I've kind of related this to Danny. I've actually had other townships tell me that they're impressed on how, I guess, how much we take care of our roads in the wintertime, how often we are out there plowing or sander or whatever. You know, I, I know we can't keep our eyes on everything. When I do take calls, I mean, I, I thank everybody that calls it. It takes the community to keep their eyes out there and, and definitely help us out. So if anybody sees a problem area, definitely feel free to call. And we'll get out there. Any other public comment?
Yeah, we all know about this alley situation in Linville. Most of us do. Vacated alley, have been vacated. I'm here tonight to go on record and request a couple of things from, from the trustees, secretary. We've researched records that hasn't showed us anything, and I do appreciate that. That took a lot of time. It's my understanding, as I've been told by former trustee's official, that all of the alleys in Linville were vacated some years ago with the exception of one. I have nothing in writing to back this up. However, it stands to reason that it's been vacated because it's never been maintained. It's never been signed, as I call it. I have been responsible for it for almost 20 years and prior to that, my in-laws for over 40 years. If it is an active alley, the township has been receiving money to maintain it.
We've never received money for that alley yet.
That would tell the story right there.
When you said Lindo, you mean Brownsville?
No, that's not- Lindo.
You mean Lindo. So which, which road are you talking about?
I can't tell you the name of the alley. There is no name. There is no number, but it's 10642 is the address. I have the golf cart shop there in Dubois that from the residents to the east. I have been responsible for maintaining it for quite some years. My point is, if the township's been receiving money for it, fine. It's an alley. If you haven't, then that just concretes what I'm saying here now. It has been vacated, abandoned, call it what you want.
Is that showing up on, do you have that list with you that we saw?
It's not. It wasn't, but it's not on the list.
Well, we've got maps showing all these little alleys in Linville, but it's worthless because they've been abandoned. They still show up on the map, as the one who questioned us. This is worthless.
I don't know if they're on our mileage list though. That's what we got to find out if it's on the mileage list.
We don't, it ain't on the mileage.
We might have got a map, but it doesn't mean we're getting the mileage.
Right. And that's what he's saying. He, he wants to see if we are armed.
If we don't get this resolved, it's going to be a bigger fish for all of you probably. This is just a little problem for me. I can see down the road, you're going to have to deal with a lot more shit or crap. But anyhow, if indeed it has not been vacated, if you have been getting money for it, it is an alley, then I request that it be abandoned, vacated, whatever. Do what you got to do. Let's get this thing shut down. There are some lies been told to gain access to this, and this really rubs me the wrong way. I, I see intent going on here that is not good. And I'll say no more. At this point, we need this thing vacated. I need it vacated. Abandoned.
Does Jenny have all the information already? You've been working with her?
I sent her an email with my questions in an effort to achieve a status of the alley, and she's got that email.
I think they, they have to go to the county to vacate that.
There's a process to go through, but we got to find out whether it's on, on there to start with.
Well, there, the, the new homeowner's lawyer has told me I must move a particular item that I didn't know was in an alley.
Right.
Because when Mr. Whitey gave me the zoning permit, no problem. This is an abandoned alley. You can build your building here, no problem. Oh, oh, really? So now they're telling me I have to move this box. I don't know where to move it to because I don't know exactly where the alley's at, if it is an alley. So I'm under a timeframe here. I've got a threat from this lawyer. I'm going to go to court on this matter. I need some answers. My request went into you guys about a month ago, and tonight I got an answer on one of the questions.
Is this the one that Barb had brought us last month?
Yes.
This is that one?
Are there, are there those itemized on our?
They are, but they did not send that list this time. I can't call them.
She told, they told you that they talked to me? When?
They told me that they talked to you when they first moved in.
They don't live there.
Right. No, when they first moved in. They're not even living there yet. See, when I went there, they were unloading and unpacking everything.
There's no one living there. No one has driven on that driveway that they can't get in and out of since we had all these bad snows. How the hell do they know they can't get in and out? They've not driven on it. Just more untruths.
Well, I, I went to the house and they were there and unloading all kinds of stuff. And they told me that they have the right to use that according to their attorney, their real estate attorney, all these people. It's a, it's an active alley. But I went to the planning commission. Planning commission said it is an active alley, but we don't get paid for it, and they don't understand why the alley's still active. Bennett's alley's the only one that is, I mean, yeah, Bennett.
Barrett. So maybe that explains why they went off a Barrett alley and put in a-
No, he-
Thousands and thousands of tons of gravel in the driveway.
He said, I will allow you to go so far. Now, there's a section from, it's kind of hard to, on the road going up to his place. There's his, this goes up to his house.
I got it right here.
Okay. There's a small section right here.
60 by 27.
That they can get through. That's what he told them they could go through. But they came all the way up here. They tore his yard up. So there's another lawsuit already.
Well, and I don't, this is going off the subject. I want the alley being abandoned. I don't, but I don't like-
According to the planning commission of the, the engineers, there was some kind of mistake and that road should have been vacated, but it was not. And it's the only one in Linville that is still highlighted as used.
If that's the case, then it would be on our mileage.
Barrett, no, Barrett's is Barrett's.
Right.
It's right next to it.
Right, so there's the two in Linville.
Can you leave your name and number, sir, so I can?
Uh, 323-2858, Jim Wusk, L U S K.
323, I'm sorry.
2858.
Let us look back at the, the actual road mileage that we get every year and see if, if there's anything assigned to that.
There's not.
There's not.
You know, I don't know if there is. There's not a name on it, so the only thing that's beyond it would be a number, if there's anything.
There ain't no number.
Right. So that's going to be concrete evidence for you if there is nothing.
Are you saying that Barrett is showing up on our mileage, but it's the only one?
Yeah, that's the only one.
Only for a small section, yes.
But it's the only one in Linville, Barrett?
Yes, all the rest were vacated except for the one in between his house and his mother, mother's, right?
Mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law's house, which it hasn't been maintained. We have a maintenance bid, because he even said that. Nobody has been through there. He's laid all the gravel. He's done everything.
Yeah, well, bear in mind, if this thing is still active, it belongs to the township, you owe me some money for all that gravel and stuff. And I will give you a bill. Hopefully, we can take a man and get settled with you. Okay, we beat that everywhere.
I'll, I'll work with him. We'll see what he can.
You got two alleys. You got the one that's going in, you don't think it's a road.
Yeah, that's Barrett.
At the top of the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got the one there in Pleasant, Chap.
Yeah, you can make a left on Barrett. That's all we got.
Yeah, them's the only two we got. I know of.
That's what the map didn't show.
That's what the map didn't show.
No, Franklin Township.
Yeah, annual forty yard sale's coming up here, and I got an email today from Charlotte Divine. They have a committee over there on the route forty yard sale, and they're having a meeting at the building of Bieber on Thursday, March the sixth, at ten AM. And I've been going to them for about three, four years here, and they give out, you know, pretty good information, so if anybody wants to know anything about the annual forty yard sale, it's a, it may want to attend that.
What are the days gonna be this year, do you know?
The route forty sale, well, Monday after, Monday's day, uh, Monday's, uh, my floral day, it starts Wednesday after that Monday.
Right, okay.
And runs through that Sunday. They have a, they have a
Twenty-eight, June the first.
They have a meeting every month or yards annual forty sales over, so if anybody wants
What, what do they usually discuss?
I'll drive you.
What do they discuss at that meeting?
The route forty yard sale, any ideas, any input, they try to get more people involved in, you know, communities and and it's not, you know, just all around, you know, these counties around here, you know.
Sure, definitely, okay.
March the sixth.
And ten.
Yeah, ten, it's a Thursday, yeah, ten AM, so it's a, a ten AM. At W B B. Food station, where food station is, on the other side.
Okay, anybody else?
You know where the library is, don't you, Dean?
Yeah, go ahead, Barb.
Yeah, when you're putting the, looking at the signs to put up the entering Licking County, could you please look at Max Road and Open Woods Road coming from Perry into Licking?
Open Woods on Licking.
Up in Woods.
The Max and Cherry Hill sign. Midland Oil.
And Mount, is it Mount Perry?
Midland Oil has.
Nope, Mount Ho. And Shelley Road.
Mount Ho, that's it, Mount Open Woods, Mount Ho.
No, Shelley's on.
Shelley goes into, ends it on Perry County.
Boundaries right there.
Yeah, boundaries, yeah.
Shelley?
Yeah, Shelley does. None of them used.
See, that'd be county responsible, that's county road.
Yeah, it's county.
Our road.
Yeah.
There's a sign coming down.
Yeah, we
On Max Road, everybody knows it's Max Road.
Yeah, Max and
The, the signs completely
No, that's, the Max is the one.
In the tree line.
Yeah, you can't see it at all.
The one that was up on hill right there.
Uh-huh.
Well, maybe we'll look in order and see if there's that.
And people don't know you're in Licking County.
Do you want to?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, you know, there's, did you know Perry County is a huge drug lord? We don't want to be affiliated with that, do we?
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you find out for me, somebody, why we can't have second driveway run up to that house road?
I heard, I heard about that.
The engine's getting to the house, you heard about that? Right now, it is nothing but mud and a new existing one that you can't even put rocks down because it's not having to rip out. Even, and across the road, it's a, like this, and close together, and other people have
You worked with the planning commission on that, right?
They said you have to have so much
Who should you work with on that? Planning?
I can't remember, I can't remember the name. Why you have to have so much room between the two? What, what is occurring, anybody else in the whole township, that there is two ways to go in and turn back out?
You're talking about like a, where she driving through one driveway?
Or any kind of driveway.
Right. I heard about that, I'll ask, I'll talk to the planning commission, see if they have an answer to that.
They said there has to be so many feet between this one and this one, but what I want to know is why? It's the same property, so why? Why can't they go up that driveway? They can't even park there at all, not even on the street or across the road, or push the car out.
They got, but more closer to the road or?
Yes.
Closer, yes, okay, when it's walking.
Yeah, last night, in the dark. But it's nothing but mud, they can't park anywhere, and
So, so you'd like to move the driveway further west?
I want the driveway where it was, for them. And the other ones be there too, in case, you know, had to be there, but why can't they have, why can't they go in there and then, and then maybe they could just go on out the other one, or they can come back out that one? Why is it?
I don't know why they would make you have that further east because you're moving it west further away from the other driveway, so I don't understand why.
They said that you cannot have these driveway going to the house road where it was, it had to be between the two, and you cannot, you can't, there's not enough space between this one and this one for both to be there. And I said, you realize now, his garage is on the opposite side of the house. His door is on the opposite side of the house, and he's driving up the one that we had to put in and going across the front yard, and now he's stuck in the yard and he can't get out of it.
I'll ask him if that could be moved.
And the whole front yard's tore up.
Go.
Go ahead.
I, I, who, I want to know who's gonna have an investigation, come up who stole my Romney sign.
No, somebody stole his Romney sign. You can see where they hit the wire, pulling it off, getting to the top.
It's probably the same guy that stole my election sign.
I don't even think that's the junior that did it.
I'll see if I can find an answer about that driveway, I don't
It, it's really causing them problems. I saw them out there pushing their car out of front yard the other day.
Okay, anybody else?
And I don't know why I'm thinking about this, but these people would like to have their exercise group over here, why can't the people who are part of that group sign a release of liability? And then they can do it. Ask your attorney, because I've had that done in several different places.
That was one thing that they had to do, is sign a release.
Release of liability, and there you go, you can have it. Wasn't that the question?
But they also, the person that was gonna host it or put it on also had to carry their own liability insurance.
Well, they would, they would carry their own liability insurance, she would, I'm sure.
That's what was stated.
But for herself, right, for herself, but not for the people. They signed a release of liability.
But they stated to me, I'm just passing it along that they wanted
But, but did your insurance person say they could not sign a release of liability?
To sign a release, and for the person hosting it, that's gonna put it on, to also carry their own liability insurance.
So that host has to have the liability for the people, then they have to sign off on it?
That's what they expressed, yes.
That's, that's not, something's
I, I see what you're saying, but that's what they expressed.
Yeah, because if I sign up and say, you know, I'm responsible for my own injuries, and everybody in there does, how can you come back and sue somebody? Or say, you're responsible for me and her.
I'll make a motion and pay bills. Oh, okay.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys, I'm gonna help them with the Easter, Easter egg hunt. And I appreciate you offering the donation. If Jeff Corpenning, he didn't want that, I understand, he, he, he's concerned about the money, if it gets to the point where it's gonna cause a problem with the township, I will donate that money. Also, I just want you all to know that, or Jeff to know, that that money, if it's absolutely necessary to be returned as opposed to be donated for the kids, I will, I will repay that.
Jeff can save the township more than $200 by going out and plowing snow.
You guys wanna make your motion to pay bills, Dan?
Yeah, I made a motion to pay bills.
I already said I can do that.
I have a records request for Jeff, and he didn't write it.
Bring that tape in.
Are you gonna acknowledge that I called you, Dan, you didn't return my call?
Yeah, I know you called.
Okay, well, call me again, and I'll play that for you on the phone. You can get your own answering, recording device, you can record it, do whatever you want. If that's not good enough for you, Dan, then you can get on the internet, sir, and here's the web address. You can go there and you can watch it, you can play it, you can share it, you can do whatever you want with it, Dan.
Question, question, I have a question if we start paying bills.
Hold on, can you read that for me, Jeff? Here's a request that was turned in, says trustee Corpenning, I'm requesting a copy of all township meetings that you have videotaped, including the February 2014 meeting.
All you have to do, Mrs. Bullin, is go to youtube.com backslash Corpenning.
I'm making a public record, plus from a trustee who is videotaping every meeting. I would like a DVD copy of every meeting you have reported.
Nobody has to give an explanation why they're asking for public record.
This is, the fiscal officer handles those, so I'm giving it to her.
Do you have copies of that?
I have those records.
I've got nothing.
You're the one that records them.
I told you how to see them, and that's where they are.
But they're changed, no, no, my attorney said, it's in writing and it's verbally and it's done.
He alters all of them on the internet now.
It's all, it's all there for a record.
It's a public column, we got two, I think.
Got one more, okay.
We already have a second to pay bills, are we?
No, no, I asked if they could hold a question, now, here's my question. So, if Mr. Corpenning calls and asks me for a public record, can I read that public record data? Since he records everything, he now has documentation of that record, correct?
Sure.
If I read it directly to him? Am I correct? That is, is that not what he just said? He told you guys to look it up, or call him and he will let you hear it, right? You asked to see it, you want it, right? Right here, you can record me all you want.
It's right there.
Okay, hold on. Am I right? I can call him and say, duh, 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 there's your public record request.
What if somebody doesn't have internet access?
Am I correct?
I have to go to the public library.
Jeff, I'm, I'm curious, what if somebody doesn't have access to the internet? But if you made a copy, they could watch it?
That's exactly right.
No comment, no answer, nothing like that?
Yeah, good.
I'd like to thank you, Ben, for reading that out loud. I'd like to thank you, Ben, for reading that to everyone, since Jeff soon didn't, I can't believe that a trustee wouldn't wanna read something that he has to do.
Did you not push me in the room, please?
I very much
Nobody's touching you.
No violation, definitely, we appreciate it, for coming, definitely. I think we have one more, Dan.
Trying to tape the meeting, ma'am.
Hey, Jeff, I'm gonna tell you right now, I read both corners, and I've been recorded, repoed, and all of course it said, it better not show up on the internet, because I don't want it recorded. So you better not show me up on that internet, I will
Wrong answer.
Your tape's, your tape's running.
You know, we need people in this, you know, sit down, hold, it's full water.
What was that other check?
I got it right here, 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 like, um, it's got flash light on.
I don't want to.
You're done with my code, Ben, just send it back.
Yes, Ben. Are you signing? Pass it over there, Ben, before you do some stuff. I signed it.
It wouldn't matter, I guess.
One other picture, he's calling, he's calling.
He's probably crying.
Jeff. Jeff.
Except he did tonight.
Yeah, I did tonight.
He messed up.
It's one of them things, Charlie.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine. I, I figured it out.
Well, I'll make a motion with you.
There is no driveway to the house anymore. Yeah, it's between the two pieces. And the one that was there, they made us spray all the gravel off, it's all in a pile. They said, we'll cover it out. It took, um, two or three trips out there to say the ditch was straight enough to okay it, we can't even have a driveway board up to the house.
Do you want to answer it back?
It's ridiculous.
I'll find out, because I don't get that, because if you were moving this way, you would actually be further from the other driveway, right?
It was already there.
Exactly. What they want, two things between drivers, what they told you.
There's not enough space between the two, they said.
I get it, but you need it further away.
But they're saying there's not enough space between, we have to put in there, between the two pieces, and the one boy and they said there's not enough, it's ours, so if that's Yeah. The driveway, legal driveway we're in goes right like this, only it don't go far enough to get to here. They still There's one here to be legal. This guy, this is right here, and the driveway and they made us rip it out and move it along and put it here. There's not enough, there's not enough You know what they're doing? They're pulling in there and they're going across the front there, so that they can get to here.
They would have to explain that to you. This is yours, Dan.
It's mine. Now that it's frozen, but they said, they said it's gonna be this many feet, and I said
I was videotaping the meeting, I was standing behind the designated taping area, the tree mower blocked the camera, kept shoving on there until I was in the room, and then they shut the door, stood and find the door and block the camera. I'm now out of there and I'm back to the house. The meeting is technically still going on, unless I returned it, because there's one trust on our scale, it's supposed to be
Then they're gonna have to walk through all this one, they're gonna have to walk All of the driveway had to be sprayed off and put in a pile there. They had to prove that they did not go through there. Somebody got hurt, one plus that driveway. And why, it's my property. So, to make a horseshoe library, they probably say, we can't use this piece because, and that'll keep these people from being able to get out when they're, or something, I don't know. But, maybe it could come up and around and right beside.
Was the meeting adjourned?
Yeah.
Where's the checks?
So
I'd like to see the checks and have a chance to sign the checks.
I'm not tired of them, Jeff.
Right now, there's no driveway to your house.
The meeting, was it adjourned, you're saying?
No, they're good. And a woman, I assume, it was a lady living there that was feeding, so Bill wasn't there. I called Bill and said, where are you? He said, he's in Amesville, he's at the hospital with somebody.
Yeah.
And I said, everybody's at your house.
Yes.
Call and see what's going on. Because they're all at your house, and maybe there's, been there a while. So, I didn't even ask them anything, because today was so heavy, I didn't even have a chance to ask them with her. Was she okay?
Cops going, come with us, they are.
It looked like the sheriff, the squad.